Good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, March 2nd, 2017. We are here for our next budget session hearing. If everybody would like to stand for the pledge allegiance, we'll continue from there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands in one nation, united, indivisible, with equal justice and equality.
Thank you, everybody. Steve, if you'd like to start, I'll start with you.
Yes, this evening, we will be reviewing the budgets for the Recreation Department, Peasdale Office Building, Guild, Community Rec Center, and Senior Services. Then we'll move on to the Public Services domain involving the Public Works Department, Water, Waste Water, and Solid Waste Accounts. And we'll address any questions the council has. I'd certainly ask that if there are questions, interrupt us during the presentation so that we can get the answers to you right away. Going to start out tonight, under tab number nine, for Parks and Recreation. And we're going to move forward with Terry will present.
We'll start with the General Fund Parks and Recreation Budget. You'll see that we have six cost centers under that budget. Recreation Department, Park Maintenance, Athletics, Aquatics, Leisure Services, and Creative Activities, which is Steppingstone. What we have for, the way it's broken out, is between rec programming and park maintenance. And we'll go through the various cost centers and I'll explain the budget.
As she's getting ready, I gave you a sheet to show you the Recreation Department. It's a chart that I wanted council to see because one of the things we're going to be discussing is those programs that have been moved from the General Fund that will now operate both revenue and expense-wise through the Community Recreation Center. So, the chart that I'm giving you presents what the recreation program budget is. You can see that in the 16, 17-year, was a budget of $1,851,000. It's going to be reduced by $81,000 in program costs. And at the same time, those are all going to be costs that will be moved into the Recreation, Community Recreation Center. We're also going to be looking at revenues. We're going to lose $90,000 in revenue, which will also get moved for the programs that are moved because they're providing us with more dollars than what we're expending on those programs. So, you can see that the overall budget proposal for the 17, 18-year, when we look at the five different, six different areas of the street maintenance or the recreation maintenance is $1,108,000. So, the overall increase as far as tax effort is concerned within the General Fund will be $8,787. Certainly, a portion of those dollars are now being pushed into the Rec Center. But I want you to see that if we're removing the revenues and we're removing the expenditures for those programs. Now, there's other sheets that were provided to you this evening, which will give you the detail on each of the programmatic areas within your budget. And Terry's going to walk you through those because you'll see a gray area there. Those gray areas are where the programs were last year that have now been moved out of General Fund. So, if you want to start from there, Terry?
Yeah. If we, if you refer to page 9-7 on the expenditure statement for the first cost center, which is the Rec Department Administration, just quickly, there's not a lot of change in this cost center. There's an increase of 5%. That's primarily due to personnel increases and the new non-major technology reserve fund that's been added to all of the departments. So, that reflects an increase of about $13,800. And that includes personnel for, just as a point of information, personnel in the Parks and Recreation Department are split up by their, where they're assigned. For instance, our athletic supervisor, his salary and benefits falls under, partially under the Rec Center, partially under the Parks and Recreation General Fund. Depending on what their job roles are, my salary and benefits is split out among the cost, among the funds that I manage so that they're applied directly to what employees are responsible for. If we move on to the Parks Division expenditure statement, you'll see that there's very little increase there, 1.3%. Again, not much change in the overall Parks budget. Our Parks Division is responsible, as a reminder, for all of the park properties, all of the facilities that are managed by the Recreation Department.
There's also a really good detail on 9-2 that shows what the park maintenance is all about. You know, people look at this and they say, "Well, you're spending $930,000 on maintenance." When you look at 9.9-2, you get an idea as to what the expanse of those requirements are with the, you know, the different ball fields, the different types of activities, the number of parks, the number of restrooms that we're maintaining at this point. All of this has expanded really over the last probably 10 years. But this will give you a good idea as to what Rex's efforts are going forth throughout the course of the year.
And the other thing I would point out, too, is you'll see that the seasonal salary line reflects a nine-month time period for four seasonal employees that come onboard once spring rolls around and well into the fall for fall cleanup. If there are no questions on the Parks Division? If we look at 9-9 at the athletic program, this is really the major change in the Parks and Recreation budget. As Steve had mentioned, there's a significant decrease in this expenditure due to the shifting of the indoor athletic programs. Most of the indoor programs, which are now located at the school gymnasiums, will, many of them will be moved over to the Rec Center. And so, the expenditures associated with those will also shift over, as will the revenue. So, you'll see a 35% decrease in the athletic budget. The other item that has moved over to the Rec Center is also the personnel line. You'll see a decrease there. Again, that's because our athletic supervisor will be split up differently where 40% of his salary and benefits will be absorbed by the Rec Center Fund budget. And if you take a look at the spreadsheet that's marked at the top, it says Recreation Rec Center. These are all the programs that we currently run that are now being transferred over to the Rec Center. We'll have community education camps, we'll have indoor tennis, we'll have an indoor track program. Actually, that's new because we don't have a track yet inside. Our youth basketball program, travel program. This year, we'll be holding our summer basketball program indoors because we'll have the opportunity to do that. Adult volleyball, adult drop-in basketball, the men's over-35 league. And then additionally, on the next page of that handout, you'll see some of the community programs that are also being shifted over to the Rec Center in that area because it has not only the internal space but also the surrounding facilities to hold larger events and community programming. Any questions on the left? Just, and a point of information as well is the revenue, obviously, for those programs you'll see is also shifting over to the Rec Center.
I just have one quick question. When it comes to revenue, I'm assuming if there's scholastic sports that are moving over there, there's no revenue. But in what way are we going to generate revenue with the Recreation Center?
So, when we get to the fund and I go through that budget, we are, in addition to programming revenue, we are renting the facility. So, there will be facility rental revenue coming in. And there will be some occasion and opportunities with the school department to generate revenue on interscholastic competition. If there's a basketball, a league game that's there and the schools having a fee set for entrance, that that will be, there will be an agreement and arrangement for that revenue to be shared between the school department and the Rec Department, the Rec Center. Moving on to the aquatics program, this is our beach operation, also our summer camp that runs at the beach, which is primarily the surf camp. You'll see there's a, an increase of about 16%. That's $22,400. The reason for that increase, we have a couple of things going on here. We have, seasonal salaries has increased. We're also adding an additional assistant beach manager on weekends. We've found that in the past two seasons, there's been such high volume of activity at the beach that we've required additional management oversight during those time periods in the summer that the weekends are high-volume activity. We are also projecting a higher level of revenue for beach activity due to, based on past revenue that's come in. So, in that regard, we're looking at $173,240 for pulling in revenue between the summer camp and beach activity. Now, if we don't have an excellent summer season, the staffing is adjusted based on the weather and the anticipated attendance at the town beach. So, the expenditures will go down if the revenue is not there.
Everything comes out in balance. Even though there's an increase in the program, there's $13,000 in additional revenue over what the expense statement was.
If we move on to the Leisure Services Cost Center, you'll see that we also have a decrease in that budget as well. Again, some of those programs that are associated or were in that particular cost center have been moved over to the Rec Center. And that is also attached in the handouts that you got this evening. You'll see our Earth Day Yard Sale, our famous pumpkin racing, the back-to-school program, and other general community programs will be moved over to the Rec Center Fund. If there's no questions on the Leisure Services budget? We can move on to Creative Activities. That is our Steppingstone Preschool Program, where we're indicating a decrease overall in the budget by about 7%. There was a seasonal salaries adjustment made because of the change in the program that we're having going forward. There's not the necessity for an additional part-time staff member to be involved with that program. We are keeping a close watch on the Steppingstone Preschool Program because we've had some fluctuations in the number of students. We do three and four-year-olds. We've changed the schedule a bit. This spring, we are holding our open house a little bit earlier so that we can better gauge what we're going into for next year. And if necessary, we'll adjust based on the student enrollment. So, right now, we're looking at a $93,000 expenditure for that program.
Am I reading this right? Full-time employees, it says $7,397. So, we only have, that's it for full-time employees?
So, what that is actually, all of our Steppingstone staff is actually part-time because they're not a full year. That one item in the full-time employee line is a percentage of our building maintenance person who maintains that building year-round.
Got me. We're just really underpaying someone.
No, 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 that's not what that is. The others are all classified as part-time because they do not work through the summer.
Thank you.
Any questions?
What does the enrollment look like for Steppingstone?
So, we have a capacity of 20 students. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, or is it 18? 18 per class, 60 total. And we take both three- and four-year-olds, and we have morning programs and afternoon programs. And it's fluctuated somewhat. We found that this past year, we actually had more three-year-olds. So, we are anticipating that the four-year-old program will see a boost in the coming year. But there are less students overall in the town. So, that's what we're looking at. We realize this is the skip program that's very popular. But there seems to be a demand. We only run, we run half-day programs. So, that's desirable for some folks.
Just remember that as far as the recreation programs, whether it's at the Guild, whether it's with the Rec Center, or whether it's in here, any of these programs, we're giving you what the budget is that's anticipated. Our objective is to run 80% of those programs or 85% of those programs. We can offer programs, we can tell you what we anticipate the expense to be. But if we don't have the, people want to participate in the program, that program doesn't get run, which then means that the expenditure statement is going to go down just as the revenue statement. So, this is really a flexible budget based on what the projection is. They have been very successful in being able to run over 85% of the programs that they put out in their pamphlets. But we still are going to be able to adjust up and down. That's like when you look at the aquatics program, you say, "Well, there's a large increase there." But the increase is there because the program expansions have occurred, or we anticipate that they're going to occur. If there's no questions, we're going to move on to PDOB, which is tab number 12.
So, as most of you know, PDOB is operated by the Parks and Recreation Department. It is a separate fund. It's self-sustaining. And the Recreation Department utilizes certain areas of the building for programming purposes. The ground floor is used for an art studio, and the third floor has an exercise room as well as a meeting room, which we utilize for programs, and we also will rent out those spaces. The rest of the building is leased. There are commercial leases for local businesses primarily. And that fund fluctuates a little bit depending on whether we're at full capacity or not. Currently, the building is not at full capacity. We're under construction with one end unit that needed some HVAC upgrades. So, in this current year, we're looking at a reduction in the overall anticipated revenue because that particular unit hasn't been rented. But once that is complete, we will fill that with a current renter, a current tenant, and look to fill two other units by the end of this fiscal year so that looking forward, we'll have a full slate of tenants to realize our maximum revenue capacity. If you look at page 12-3, you see just an overall funding comparison. And you'll notice that the projection in 2016-17 reflects that major improvement that the building is undergoing right now with that capital outlay of $66,000. For the 17-18-year, we're proposing an overall budget of $92,651. And on the revenue side, which is located on page 12-5, you'll see the projected revenue total is $94,434, providing we have a full complement of tenants within the building. And just as some more information on PDOB, we maintain that. Our building maintenance staff maintains that. Rex Eberle, our park superintendent oversees that and the general facility upkeep and Any questions on Peasdale Office Building?
Terry, do you, I know that that bottom floor can be tricky, the one that kind of faces the river, when it rains, flooding. Do you think that any permanent measures need to be taken to sort of control the rainwater over there? Or do you think that what we have is sufficient?
That's a good question. We've experienced flooding in that building. We have established some protocol for preventing inundation into the building, sump pumps, that type of thing. One of the broader issues is that, is the brook. And that it would need to be addressed on a large-scale level in terms of either excavating or cleaning it out and not just in our section, obviously, all the way by river bend and down the river. Otherwise, it just pushes the problem downstream.
Do you think it's managed now?
It is managed. When we know, are aware that there's going to be flash flooding and the ground is saturated, we have a system in place where we will prepare the building with sandbags, with having people prepared to, you know, get the wetbacks out. And again, the sump pump is protecting the boiler room. So, that's where we're at now. It does need a long-term fix, but I think that's more directed at how we fix the brook.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
We don't anticipate that we would be able to fix that because same problem that we would have on Sogatucket Road is we can't increase the volume of water that passes under that bridge.
I didn't know if there were any drainage options or anything that we were looking into.
I think the solution that they've worked out with the sump pump being on the ready, the sandbags being used to try to prevent it from getting into the building itself. But we're never going to stop that completely. The next tab is tab 13 for the Senior Services Program.
Do you mind if we skip to the Guild first?
You want to do Guild? Well?
That's the order of the presentation.
Okay, yeah, we'll do the Guild next.
As you know, the Neighborhood Guild is another standalone fund operated by the Parks and Recreation Department. It's the home of our administrative offices and our community center. We have a number of different cost centers within the Guild Fund. We have administration and maintenance. We have front desk operations, a senior trip program, youth programs, music, adults, and arts. And the Guild, the Guild budget is set up by, through funding of both program revenue and revenue through the Guild trust funds. If we look at, if we start on page 14-6 on the expenditure statements, we can just run through these. The Guild administration and maintenance, that is, really entails our staffing of the building and oversight of all of the administrative functions for the Recreation Department. We have a bit of a decrease in the overall admin. That's partially due to some of the shifting in the staffing allocations and our reduction in the professional services line. Other than that, it's pretty standard with basically the operational costs of the Guild's utilities and refuse and general office activity. Any questions on admin and maintenance?
I think the key with the Guild is what we're trying to do is to run the programs where all of the costs that are building-related would be coming out of the trust funds. So, that way, the programs have a place to operate without concern on what the cost of heat, light, and building improvements are. That's what our objective is. At this point, we got about 45% from the trust fund that goes in to that program at this point. If we didn't have those trust funds, this would probably be a program that would require property tax support. Because just like with Peasdale Office Building, there are no property taxes that go in to either the operation or the maintenance associated with the building. And in fact, with the capital improvements on the Guild, what we're looking to do for bond purposes is to have trust fund investment income being able to be used to pay for the debt service associated with those type of projects. As I mentioned in the capital budget when we presented it, if we do look at a new bonding project, we really have to look at what the yields are within the trust funds themselves to see whether or not that's still a viable option. But that's probably two years down the road. Any questions as far as the Guild operations concerned?
I had a quick question. It's on the adults program. That includes like all the travel trips and things like that?
The trips?
Yeah.
The trips fall under the senior program?
Okay.
So, I think that, the name of that fund or account has just carried over. It's not specific to seniors, per se, but that tends to be the demographic that uses the trip program.
Gotcha. So, like the cost of renting buses and the transportation, that's in the professional services?
Are you referring to the senior program, the seniors?
Yes.
That's correct. That's part of, we contract with Collette, those types of, and they provide the busing.
I just want to know if we had a contract or, you know, we always see the increases in transportation costs. So, I just wanted to see. But it looks like that's gone down.
Yeah. And we adjust based on the previous year's activity. So, it fluctuates a little bit.
You know, some of those trips are so popular.
We have a lot of, yeah, New York and some of the sports events.
All right. That moves us on to Community Rec Center. We're attached to theme.
So, what you all have been waiting for, our Community Recreation Center budget, which will be our first full-year operating budget for this facility. Just a little update on the project. You'll see some photos there. It's moving along and progressing very nicely within budget and anticipated for sometime towards the end of April on a completion date with looking at May for some grand opening event for the facility. So, we're very pleased to see the progress. And we've planned a budget for the facility. Just to note, some of our priorities are pretty basic in terms of what we're looking to do for this year, which really is to establish our programming, to relocate our indoor athletic programming and get those up and running, and also to develop new programs. Because clearly, now we have this fabulous new facility that we want the entire community to be able to embrace and feel ownership of going forward. So, we're excited to be able to do that. If you take a look at the overall funding comparison on page 15-3, you'll see the total operational budget is $457,024 for 2017-18. We've, again, we've relocated our athletic indoor programming into this budget so that it offsets some of the operational costs. But essentially, we've got personnel expenditures at $341,000. That includes a, two new full-time positions, building maintenance and a Rec Center manager, a portion of the athletic facility, athletic supervisor, and also part-time recreation specialists who will man the front desk. That's what that $341,000 reflects for the year. The remainder are the operational expenses, which is $115,000.
Terry, have you had any inquiries for renting the building? Do you have any idea of what the revenue's going to look like for that building?
We have, if, actually, if we flip to page 15-5, I can speak to the revenue. We have had some inquiries. People are quite anxious to have some time in the building. We've actually been developing some informational packets, Q and A, and a rental packet that's been authorized by the Rec Commission. been authorized by the Rec Commission to be able to put out into the community. What we're looking at for the 17-18 year is a $22,000 rental income. I'm thinking that's relatively conservative if, once we get up and running, but that's what we're estimating. And then our athletic program revenues are at $115,900. So we're looking at a general fund transfer of $308,911, which is actually less than what we projected in our initial presentation of the program over the long term. I think we were at $360-something thousand for, thinking that we would need general fund tax dollars for that, for the first full operating year, so.
I think you were anticipating less rental revenue as well, I think, the original.
Right.
Actually, in the beginning, you were. And I think, once the word gets out that it has become available and open, you're going to see some more, absolutely.
We will, and now that we've actually established, the Recreation Commission has established a rental fee structure, we were able to better calculate what we feel is a reasonable estimate on what we see for rental income. So overall.
Can I just ask one quick question? I know it's not budget-related, but in terms of priority, there's going to be people that rent and there's going to be town programs. How are you going to manage that? I mean, I'm just a little concerned.
That's a good question. Actually, our Recreation Commission policy manual addresses that. It will be consistent with what already exists for the guild, for athletic fields, and it's a tiered policy that states recreation programming first, school department programming, local nonprofit leagues, and then we get into resident rentals, and then for-profit and/or select club, elite type of programs. So there's a definite structure in place, and we've developed a rental packet that will show that, it will indicate the fee schedule. So that's.
I see some people trying to, struggle to make it work towards, make their program a priority. That's why I was asking that.
Right, right. No, it's a very good question, and we're aware that that may come up, but we have a very longstanding policy for all of the recreation facilities that will apply to this as well.
And in some cases, we have to discern the difference between a single type of a program. Let's use soccer as an example. Soccer may be a program where there's volunteers and it's a volunteer program. They would have one rate of zero on use of the fields. Yet if there's a soccer program, same people that are charging the students to be a resident on that field, then at that point, it's really a for-profit. They're going to be charged at a different rate. So there's those type of issues that the Recreation Commission has dealt with over the years. How do we provide for use on our fields? How do we provide for use on the beach? And how do we make sure that it's fair and that there's a hand up for the nonprofits versus the business use if, in fact, there's going to be profit taken out of it?
Any other questions on the Recreation Center?
Any idea on the hours?
Yes. The hours from Monday through Friday will be 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Saturday will be 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and Sunday will be 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And we know that that could fluctuate based on the demand, the need, whether or not we have opportunity for revenue generation beyond those hours. That's something we'll consider.
So you would consider something like, I'm thinking Wild World of Sports has like overnight leagues. Would you consider that?
You know, everything's on the table at this point, but I'm not thinking overnight, but certainly there could be late night. We understand that there are adult programs that would like to play basketball at 10 o'clock at night. We're kind of starting at a baseline to get our feet on the ground and get the building up and running, but we'll be looking at revenue opportunities.
We've got to look at what those costs are because we can't have the buildings without supervision in the building for any of the time that there's uses going on. So we've got to look at what those costs would be. We've budgeted for the hours that have been mentioned, but if, in fact, somebody came to us and said, "We want a program that's going to be, you know, 10 through midnight" or this type of a program, we'd have to determine what our cost would be to be able to provide that. And if they were reasonable and the people wanted that, we would look at providing that type of service. But we've got to make sure that we're in a position where we've always got full control of the facility, both from a public safety standpoint and from a facility's management perspective.
Terry, I have a question. You're looking about maybe seven weeks away or eight weeks away with a projection of April. Are you moving people from the current building facility or are you additional hiring as that has been started?
The hiring process has begun. We've been interviewing. We're only moving one existing staff person from the guild. That's the athletic supervisor that I mentioned. Some of his expenses have been shifted. That's the only staff person. And then two full-time staff people, building maintenance, rec center manager, and then part-time building maintenance and part-time recreation specialists that will man the front desk.
I'm sure it will all be in place.
You only have, I'm sorry, you only have one person, recreation specialist for the front desk for all those hours?
No, 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 five. There are five part-time positions that will man that front, just similar to the guild. So we have a number of part-timers that do the nighttime hours or the early morning hours.
And if the building's open, there'll be somebody at that desk?
Yes.
Terry, go through what it is as far as our objectives on the position that we're hiring for the manager because this is a, there's a very broad responsibility that's going to come into play here in terms of what we advertise for, and in fact, some excellent applicants that came in for it.
The role of the rec center manager really spans responsibilities that include facility management and recreational programming. So this person really needs to have a pretty broad-based background so that they understand how facilities operate, they can manage building maintenance personnel, they understand the safety protocol, and on the flip side, that they also can manage our staff who will be working in that building, learning all of the ins and outs of the, not only the programs, but the building components. Not to get too detailed, but there's a, you know, an operational component with all of the equipment that's going to be in the gymnasium that's motorized, nets that'll drop down, a curtain that drops down to divide the courts, various sound equipment, that type of thing. So we really were looking for an individual that would be able to manage all of that and know that they're responsible for, not only that, but also the budget, the budget side of the operation and understanding the importance of the fiscal management of the facility because it is its own separate fund and we work within a budget. And so having the understanding of all of those components was important to us when we went through the process with, we had many, many applicants.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. What is the pay scale for that decision?
Just under $60,000, I believe. That's a 58.5.
Any other questions with the Community Center? If not, we'll move back to the seniors program.
I think you all know Susan Demasi. She's our senior services director. She's joining us this evening since she has been intimately involved with developing this budget. And overall, just to refresh everyone's memory, senior services has the four divisions, the transportation, nutrition program, adult day, and the senior center. If we start with the way the budget narrative is laid out here, if you turn to page 13-3, we can talk about the nutrition program first. I'm sorry, the transportation program first on 13-2. I skipped over that one. As you know, the senior transportation program is responsible for transporting residents over 60 to the senior center, other locations like supermarkets and hairdressers and pharmacies and that type of thing. There hasn't been much of a change in the overall transportation program. You'll notice this on page 13-9, there's an overall increase of 2.2%. That's essentially allocated to the personnel increases. If there are no questions on the transportation program, we can look at the nutrition program. The nutrition program is shared with the town of Narragansett. So South Kingstown and Narragansett contribute to the net cost of the nutrition program. On 13-3, you'll see a table at the top of the page that illustrates the, how the cost share is broken out. We have a total budget of $122,000. We get a portion of a grant from the state, and then our net cost to operate the program is $117,900. We take a four-year average of the number of meals that have been provided to South Kingstown residents and Narragansett residents, and then we simply calculate the percentage and allocate that amount to each community. So South Kingstown is at about 68%, and we will, the cost share for our town will be $79,810, and Narragansett will be $38,044. That's pretty consistent. That's usually kind of a 70-30 split between the two towns. Any questions on?
What are the non-participating community meals?
Those are seniors who may come from another community like Charlestown or Exeter. Because we are, we receive federal funds through the Title III C program. West Bay Community Action provides the meals. While they're not reflected in the budget, the actual meals, they provide them. Because they are federally funded, the site is a meal site for any senior who wishes to come in and partake of a noontime meal. And so that's.
Or disabled.
Or disabled, that's correct, right.
Since most centers have the same food coming into them, nobody's looking to go to one versus the other as far as having better food.
Any questions on nutrition? If we skip to 13-4, we can take a look at the table that describes the adult day program, which is probably the most complicated of the four divisions in that we have two other communities that participate in the cost sharing for the operational costs of the daycare The overall operational cost for daycare for 17-18 will be $316,000. And we do get some funding, not only through grants, but obviously through our client payments. There is a daily fee, or there is state payments, which is through Medicare or Medicaid. We get reimbursed. So we have a projection of $120,000 coming in, excuse me, I'm sorry. We have a net cost of $120,000, which is what the three communities have to share in. And the way we calculate that is based on the number of days of service provided to the clients, and it gets applied to that, the town that they're from. So if we look at the bottom half of that table, you'll see, and again, we use a four-year average because it fluctuates too greatly year to year depending on which community has the most clients. So with the four-year average, we're looking at actually a decrease for every community for the 17-18 year, and that's partially attributable to the fact that the daily reimbursement rate has gone up from the state. And we're also seeing reimbursement from neighborhood health, which is a higher rate of reimbursement. So that has helped us to see a decrease in the contribution from the communities. But we are aware that the program does need to operate at a certain level of participation. We like to see an average daily rate of 15 clients a day. We're averaging about 13 clients right now. And again, it ebbs and flows just because of the frailty of the clientele that we're dealing with. But our goal is to be able to maintain a 15-client-per-day operation so that it drops the contribution rate for the participating communities.
What's the maximum you can help in one day?
We have a maximum of 20, 20 per day, right. And we've had, we've seen times where we've almost maxed out or have been at 20 per day. But we're definitely seeing a shift in the type of client that we're getting. They're older, they are more frail, and the stay at the daycare level tends to be shorter than it used to be. So that plays a role. So we're constantly looking at reaching out into the community, seeing where the need is, or people don't come to us until they have a need. And by that time, the parent or the loved one may only be able to stay with us for a few months before needing to move on to the next phase of care.
We're also trying, when we see people at the senior center who are starting to fail, speaking with family, or family members come to speak with me, and we've sent a couple over to the adult day so that, you know, they already have the understanding of the center and they're coming to that. So many of them actually gain more independence by going to the adult day because they're prompted to do things over there where they might just be sitting at the center doing nothing. So we're really trying to promote when it's necessary and beneficial to the participant to show them what the adult day is all about and where it is and what it is and what that
Any questions on the adult day? If you look at page 13-5, we have the breakout of the senior center programming cost as well. We're showing an operational cost of $347,808. With subtracting out our grant funds and a fund balance forward, we're looking at a net direct cost of $265,151. Again, this is a program that we share with the town of Narragansett, and we, if you look at the bottom half of that table, you'll see that if we were to break it out on a daily, I'm sorry, a cost-per-client basis, it would be $103.29 per client, which would then proportionally look, have South Kingstown at $178,000 and Narragansett at $86,000. We do not seek a full proportional cost share from Narragansett at this point. We look at a $50,000 cost share from Narragansett and general fund contribution of $215,100.
Terry, I have a question. The senior center closes at what, 5?
Closes at 3:30. Opens at 7:30, closes at 3:30.
Okay. Have you, or do you anticipate maybe with the use of the rec center and more people over there ever allowing people to utilize that building after 3:30? If someone wants to rent it, say, I mean, it's a big space in there with the kitchen and things like that. I don't know if that's ever been explored or not, but I mean, closing at 3:30, it's just such a great building with so many resources. Somebody might see that.
We've shied away or stayed away from renting it per se, but we have looked at, and Sue can speak to this a little bit more, the opportunities of having it open one night a month. a month or more than that, depending on what the either activity is at the rec center, or really what the need is for the community. We understand there's a lot of seniors out there who are, who can drive at night and who may want to participate in a program or possibly a meal. I don't know, Sue, if you have anything to add?
Well, the other thing is, like, the trend is, there's a lot of seniors that, we think of senior centers as just people that aren't working anymore, but there's a lot of seniors that are working and still want some of the benefits of a senior center. And so, there are possibilities down the line where, you know, all over that, senior centers will be open later and weekends and doing more as the senior changes. It's really, we even see it in the center, moving away from just lunch. We have like three different pockets of people, the athletic ones, the ones who want to come to eat, and then the intellectual ones. And a lot of those things could be really big programs if they were, you know, early evening.
Right. I ask because I know Joe's looking for a place to have dinner at night, so...
Well, Steve was complaining. They're not open when he gets out of work.
Oh, we'll get you all in there at some point.
Like anything else, we can run all the programs that we want and that the community wants, but it's going to cost the dollars to be able to do the staffing.
I didn't know if there was demand for that, or...
Pretty soon, we're all going to be there.
Right now, honestly, after two o'clock, because very few people...
I'm looking forward to seeing how the rec center opening affects the senior center. I hope that there's some, you know, cross-promotion, if you will, like...
Absolutely. Yeah. We see that on the rec side. We definitely see the use of the rec center facility, the walking track, the, you know, the courts, you know. We have any number of opportunities during, especially during the morning and daytime hours, where we see, you know, a back and forth from the senior center.
Is there any thought to increasing the cost share from Narragansett?
We've actually gone up the past two years a bit on the cost share. We have to reassess it every year. We do see, obviously, we have a higher percentage of South Kingstown residents that utilize the facility. We also know that Narragansett, you know, they are in equal share with, or share with the nutrition program and the daycare program. So, we're cognizant of that. If the daycare cost share should go down and we can more equitably adjust the center costs, that would be...
Especially if we're thinking of expanding services or hours, or just a thought.
I mean, the thought in the past has been that the core costs of operating that facility aren't going to change whether we have the Narragansett contingency in there or not. So, we looked at it initially, it was a case where they were providing a general contribution. Several years ago, I started putting the proportionate detail in there so that when we asked them for their contributions, they would see that we were not going dollar-for-dollar on that. But we have increased, anytime we can see a decrease on the other two program components, what we have done is to raise that. Because right now, for the, for next year, we're looking at them paying $119,000 in Narragansett toward our overall cost. The North Kingstown is paying $33,000. So, you know, by the time you're done, you've got a good deal of money coming into our program where we would be running probably the same cost as far as personnel is concerned where those folks not contributing to the programs. More so with the Adult Day services. If we were to lose a North Kingstown share for the $33,000 with that program, we would have some serious concerns on whether we could continue that program. As far as the senior center itself and the nutrition program, those are, you know, stock programs that we're not going to change. But I think it's important, too, as the committee that you are, you're the vice chair of, that there needs to be really a better understanding as to what the value is for shared services with Narragansett. I mean, we've been very fortunate with Narragansett particularly as far as all of the different services that we're able to provide, and I think it saves both communities money. But on this one here, it's really a value judgment at this point as to how much we should try to get to the full proportionality cost.
And then just as a frame of reference, the total proposed general fund transfer for South Kingstown will be $419,793, which reflects only a 1.2% increase over the current year. So, the additional daycare revenue has helped the decrease. We've gone down actually with our contribution for the nutrition program and for the daycare program. So, that has, that has helped kind of maintain, maintain the budget. Any other questions?
Great facilities and great programs.
Thank you. Fortunate.
If there's no other questions, we'll move into the Public Services Department.
Just had one quick question, I'm sorry. Is there a overall budget sheet, like where we can see your entire operating budget and expenses?
Yeah, that's in the, in the budget, the budget document. So, if you turn to, for the senior services program?
No, for the, for your, you have, you have so many programs that fall under the Recreation Department.
Okay.
I was just looking for, is there one that...
Oh, so comprehensive one?
Comprehensive, correct.
They're all broken out by tab in here, and some, because some are separate funds, and we have the general fund, Parks and Recreation. I don't have it in one, but we could probably put something together so that you can kind of see it.
Yeah, I think it would just be good to see the overall.
Mm-hmm.
Because you, we talked about five or six different...
Correct. Right. That's right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before you do leave, if you go to page four-dash-ten, four-dash-ten will show you every fund that we operate. The ten funds are there. So, you've got all ten funds so that if you want to see what Terry's operation is, you would see the Peastale Office Building, and you'll see the revenue statement as well as the expense statement, Senior Services consolidated, the Guild consolidated, and the Rec Center. So, those will give you each of those funds. The same thing as far as your utilities. If you wanted to look at, well, what are the utilities costing in the community? You've got water waste, water and solid waste. This is an important chart for you to get a global perspective on what the $94 million are, that we're anticipating spending over the next year. You'll also see as far as where the revenues are over expense statements, which are very few. The water utility is set to generate more money than what our expense statement is. Everything else is a balanced budget. We don't show anything where the expenses are going to exceed what projected revenue will be. Many times, the balancing act is the fund balance forwarded to a budget program. But is this what you're looking for, Brian, as far as that type of a detail? I mean, we can break it out. If you want us to break it out, where we take all the utilities with a single appropriation amount, and the same thing with Terry's programs, we could do that. But we tried to give you this type of a detail so you can see on a program-by-program basis.
Terry, I can say that Steve's never going to let you go. It's a lean and mean and good budget. We're very blessed here in South Kingstown. We have unbelievable services, and the quality of life is very, very good. And you're all held to task, and you do a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And can you believe Terry agreed that she was going to stay just to give moral support to John since she always gets to go first?
See you, Terry. Thank you.
We're going to tab number eight, Public Works.
Good luck, if he won't beach up.
Go to it, Johnny.
Is the microphone on?
Is your mic on?
Thank you. Again, engineering is of the different divisions is the one with the status quo, the least amount of changes. The engineering division, we do support other departments in town with engineering services. I know Josh has been working closely on the recreation center project in addition to the engineering capital projects that we work on in our department. So, if you go to page eight-dash-four, that's basically the summary again, not a whole lot of, in eight-dash-five, not a whole lot of change in the engineering division for the upcoming year. Questions on engineering? If not, Tree Warden, the summary for Tree Warden is on page eight-six. We're relatively, again, status quo on arborist services and professional services. What we do each year is we compile a list of trees and stumps that need to be removed based upon condition. If they're not emergency work, we go out and either bid or secure quotes for those. Third-party arborists, if it's an emergency work, the Tree Warden is responsible under his duties to perform that work. That's an immediate threat to the public. So, arborist services are, again, the work that is, we contract out, and professional services is the work that Bill Wallace has charged with under emergency conditions. We did add a little bit of funding for the upcoming year for new tree plantings, and that really doesn't buy us a whole lot. They're about, probably about $500 of trees. If we can get seven new trees in, that's better than none. We do try to concentrate on the ornamental trees in Wakefield and Peastale for those plantings. Trees, in fact, the council's going to probably be seeing a claim coming before you...
Can you move that mic just, because if you're going to be looking that way, just...
Sorry. The council will likely be seeing a claim at the next council meeting. We had another tree come down on South Road that actually struck two cars as the cars were passing by. The tree, the Tree Warden went out and did a forensic review. The tree was healthy. What was rotted was the root system, which obviously is not observable, so, but, so we still continue to spend monies with both Bill Wallace and arborists for tree removals. And the other thing I'd like to say is, we work closely with National Grid, and National Grid has really saved us tens of thousands of dollars in tree removals. If the, if the tree is found to be in need of removal, we first go to them. If it's a threat to the utilities, they'll take it out for us. So, Grid's been very generous in helping us do removals for trees that need to be taken out. Streetlight maintenance, this is for our expenses associated with rental of the fixtures from National Grid, the energy costs, we paid to Direct Energy, and the transmission/distribution costs was just paid to National Grid. We're in the process of working with the town of Narragansett at this point to try to develop an RFP. We did go out for proposals for O and M of streetlights. We only got one proponent for that, so we're looking to revisit and solicit another RFP for streetlight O and M, and as a separate component of that also for LED conversion. There's some significant savings in LED energy versus the consumption versus, you know, conventional lights that we have. However, the capital cost is significant for LED. The other benefit we can get if we do consider going to an LED changeout would be, we'd probably give a separate pricing for controllers. So, the technology is such now that, for example, there's a police, an accident at an intersection, the police department can increase the light, increase the light intensity to brighten the intersection during, you know, an accident investigation. And we also have the technology that if we can have the lights pulse, if you will, for evacuation rooms, so if we have a hurricane, we can have the lights pulse so people can follow the lights to the evacuation center. But again, it comes with a price, so we'll have to do an analysis of, you know, what makes sense and what doesn't financially.
That whole program could be worth between $600,000 and $700,000. We've put $250,000 away for first-year consideration on that. That was a designated fund balance transfer that the council authorized in the fourteen, fifteen-year I believe it was. So, you've got money there. We'll probably be looking at what fund balances look like this year and putting additional dollars aside for that program. Because I think that at minimum, the acquisition of the lights, the operation of those lights in their current condition, and then being able to determine what the best cost of action is on the LEDs, and what level of sophistication on the controllers, because the value of the controllers is increasing on a yearly basis. And we're still waiting for the prices to drop on some of those new, those new type of controllers that are multi-functional in terms of the different uses that they could have for the community.
I mean, the controllers even, we could, you know, lower the light intensity at night for energy savings. We can, you know, shut off every other light at night. I mean, there is a lot of things that can be done with the controllers, but again, it comes at a price. The other thing I wanted to mention was, when we did our contract amendment with Competitive Energy Services for the solar projects, as part of their ongoing services with the town, they're, they'll be providing some analysis for the different streetlight options. That was one of the items that we got them to agree with with our contract extension. Any other questions? Highway Department, again, highway is responsible for all the roads and sidewalks in town and dams and landfill mowing. One thing that we are proposing for the upcoming fiscal year would be to add an equipment operator, one, and that, we have it funded for just a half a year at this point. This would be to fill a position that was, we've lost two positions probably in the last five years due to retirements that haven't been filled. So, it's certainly going to be a benefit, not just during the winter months, but during the summer months, during our construction period, for that extra body. Really, there's, there's not a whole lot more to add on the streets.
No, I think if you just give some ideas as far as the professional services line item, which is in at the $400,000 level, John?
Sure. So, for professional services, it's a sizable number. Let me just go to my detail here real quick. That encompasses our pavement preservation or stone sealing program. It also encompasses crack sealing, line striping.
Sidewalk replacement.
Sidewalk replacement, which we try to do in-house if we have the, if we don't expend the money during the year. Also, we now contract out for catch basin cleaning, which is required by ACE2 stormwater requirement. So, I want to say we probably do about, Josh, how many a year, about 300 a year? How many catch basins a year? 300 a year, which I think we're probably far ahead than most communities in that regard. Contracting that out makes a lot more sense than trying to replace the truck that we have, which is very expensive and time-consuming.
I think the key here is that this department, outside of, people see it more visible in terms of snow removal activity, but this department's really responsible for upkeep and maintenance on all of our infrastructure. And so, I mean, if it's tablets on Main Street that need to be replaced on a sidewalk, money comes out of this budget. Of the $400-something thousand that's in that account, $75,000 is set aside for that purpose. If we don't need that much for that purpose, then it can be used for other purposes within the confines of this program. But this is also the stone sealing program that we do on a yearly basis, as well as the striping or the crack sealing. It also takes care of what little maintenance we are able to do on the boat ramps, and it also deals with a lot of the mosquito control program that we have to, have to address through this program in each of the catch basins. address through this program in each of the catch basins. So it's, that's the core service. The other major cost that's in this department is the cost of sand and salt, and you'll see that they've broken out those numbers secretly. So if you look at the account in the, in the budget, you'll see how much salt is being anticipated to be purchased, how much sand, so that we've broken out. Before, it was just listed under chemicals. We want to keep a better control of that. We're doing very well in the current year. We've used a very small amount of money as far as the, particularly the salt. We will be filling that shed before the end of the year to ensure that we have it in place for, for next season. But so far, our overtime accounts are down, but as I said to you last night, the overtime here is minimal because most of the time goes out as contract, and we're not paying for that. So there's, there are expenses there, but this will take care of the infrastructure. It also takes care of the maintenance of the vehicles operated by the department.
What about signage? When we talk about, like, adding signage to Main Street for parking and that sort of stuff, when it's not DOT, would it fall under this department, or?
We have a signage accounts, but again, Main Street is right out there responsible for signage.
I meant like the municipal lots and things, they'd be responsible for that, too?
We do the municipal.
Okay.
Again, the manager, I just want to touch quickly on the salt. I mean, we ride the state NPA, which we get the economy and scale, and actually, salt keeps, surprisingly, keeps coming down. Last year it was 63.16, we're down to 56.25 a ton. We were as high as 87.78 back in 2008, 2009, so we hope that trend continues. I don't know if it will, but it's, it's nice to see those costs come together.
And of the $90,000 that they're projecting spending, we've spent about $38,000, that's all this year so far. As I said, there still will be expenditures that'll go out based on the pricing that's there, but we're within budget. Two years ago, we were well over that dollar amount that we had. So again, it's, it's one of those things where it's going to be weather-related as to what we spend there. But if we don't spend it, we can spend it for other purposes within that program.
Within that, professional services, you said some of that's for striping. Are you anticipating increasing striping perhaps for traffic calming measures?
We do get pricing when we go out for our, we actually, South Kingston, we are the regional partner that solicits a regional striping contract. We do it for us, Wesley, Charleston, Narragansett, I think actually University, and we do put in that, a separate pricing for like letters or showers or that type of thing. I think a determination will need to be made if, if they're appropriate, you know, versus, you know, whether we have the funding or not.
More pointedly to address your question, there's $29,000 that we've incorporated into the budget, which is based on the amount of linear feet of striping that we need for centerline. There was not specific dollars set aside for traffic calming purposes. Could traffic calming money be found within the accounts overall? Probably so, but as John said, what we want to do is to make sure if we're going to be doing that, we understand what's going to be a reoccurring cost, because if we start looking at gutter lines, we're going to be doubling the cost of what that striping is. And what our concern is, is that if we're putting gutter line stripes in, and we're only putting three or four inches behind that gutter line stripe, it's ineffective.
And the other thing is, right now, we still use waterborne paint, and just the price difference is waterborne's about six cents a linear foot. We prefer epoxy, but that's 42 cents a linear foot. It's significantly more, much more durable, but much more expensive. So we still use waterborne at this point.
Any other questions as far as streets and highway? If there isn't, then we'll move into the utilities. The first is the water fund, and the water fund is under tab 17.
So again, the town has two water systems. One is the South Shore Water System, and the other is the Middle Bridge. The Middle Bridge is relatively small, only about 260 customers. South Shore is considerably larger. Both those water systems, we buy our water from Suez Rhode Island, which was formerly known as Wakefield Water. I know the manager spoke at the last council meeting about Suez is looking to replace their Sherman tank up off of Allen Avenue. Just for purpose of comparison, they did the Proust tank back in 2014, and they did a little bit of piping infrastructure at the same time, but that rate increase was like 43 percent. So I would suspect they'll be looking for a similar rate increase, probably high 30s with the Sherman tank. And the way, what happened was, when they did the Proust tank, they went to the PUC for the rate increase after the work was done. And we filed this intervenors, we said, you know, it's really not fair, you need to give notice prior to the work. And what happens is, if local Suez borrowed money from their corporate, and when they do that, they don't have to get the rate approval first, versus if they had to bond it, then they'd have to go to the PUC in advance. And I believe they're looking to do the same thing this time, is to borrow the money from corporate and then reimburse corporate so they don't have to ask for the rate filing in advance for the work. So we've asked them at this point to have a informational public meeting to at least roll out a pro forma to the residents or the users that are going to be impacted by that.
And for planning purposes, if you look at this budget, we're, we're purchasing wholesale water from Suez of about $210,000 a year. If we look at the same type of rate increase of 30 percent that came in with that last rate increase, values are going to be considerable as far as the impact on this water system, in addition to every residential customer in Wakefield, or in Narragansett for that matter.
They don't anticipate that tank going online until, not in this fiscal year.
Is the current tank structurally sound?
Well, both that tank and the Proust tank, they're called, what's called standpipes, they're just vertical cylinders, so they really, the bottom volume of the tank is really ineffective for pressure, because you get pressure, and you have the volume up in the air like our hydro sphereoids. So you'll see that the tank they built at Proust is an elevated tank, so, and it's much larger. So in the past, they've had pressure problems in that area, because pressure's dictated by the elevation you're dwelling in relation to the, the bottom of the bowl. So they've resolved that with the Proust tank, and it's also given them more capability for fire protection. I believe they're still having similar issues over in the Sweet Island Farm area, which is close in elevation. You can think Sweet Island Farm's not a whole lot lower than the bottom of that standpipe. So they're going to be looking to do a similar elevated tank and replace that Sherman at Standpipe. I believe it's the same, Josh, same size, million gallons? Is the proposed Sherman tank a million gallons? Yeah, same size. Probably just visualize that tank over at the.
As far as the water fund is concerned, the last time the council dealt with a rate increase on this, I believe it was two years ago, and at that time that that rate structure was put into place, it was anticipated that it would, it would be stable for about a five-year period. We're going into the third year since that rate increase, and we're still generating sufficient revenues, in fact, excess revenues over what our expense statement is, even though we're accounting for full depreciation on the equipment that is within that system. I think it's important to note with all three of our utilities, we are taking the depreciation value for, on an annual basis, and showing that in the budget itself. Part of that million-dollar expense for water fund is for the depreciation on those components of the system that are being used, or being expensed out for that year.
The other thing I wanted to mention is, we're still doing relatively well in unaccounted for water, which is, we know how much we purchase through wholesale meters, how much we sell through residential. However, we teamed with Narragansett for an RFP for the comprehensive leak detection services. Prices came in extremely favorable, so we hope to have that before the council for a future council meeting for award. And we've never done a comprehensive one. We've, we've found leaks and repaired them, which has made a big difference, but this will go through the entire water system, both water systems. Hopefully, what little water remains will be able to find in.
And the cost sharing, in terms of working with Narragansett on this, it means that those companies come in with one mobile station, it's going to save both of them.
And the way the, the RFP was structured was, if they gave us separate pricing, if only one community, each of us did it, but if there was two communities, we both awarded it, we got a reduction. And actually, the low proponent was the one that gave us the favorable reduction for both communities. It did help doing that on a regional basis, and I just want to thank Narragansett because they put that package together.
We purchase all the water at this point, is that correct?
Correct.
So we're not pumping any in the South District anymore?
No, we, we still have the well field, it's still active in terms of department health's view of it. We still have it tested, so God forbid something happens, we have to re-energize it, we're good to go. But all the water we've been using for the, I think since 2005 has all been from.
That's totally on standby.
That's on standby.
And are there, is it relatively low cost to leave it on standby?
Well, the, the problem we have is, is iron, and we exceeded, we used to, we called sequestration the iron and keep it in solution, but as time marches on, you know, the iron, naturally occurring iron's in the gravel deposits, that started to exceed one part per million, and when you get over one part, you can't sequester it anymore. So we'd have to build an ion, a filtration plant, and that would be a very expensive endeavor.
You can't mix the waters from two different systems.
Right.
It depends on what the treatment is that's going in with United or Suez, as it's called now.
I think as long as we can continue to reserve funds, you know, maybe someday we'll be able to build up enough of reserve, because I think if we had debt service for a $5 million plant on the number of customers, it would be devastating, unless EPA money came along, but I don't see that happening anytime.
Right.
Other questions as far as water utility? If not, we can move on to wastewater. That's tab 18.
The big challenge we have this year in wastewater is solids disposal. The council may recall, we had to recently authorize an amendment for Synergro. Their, their rates are increasing significantly for the upcoming fiscal, upcoming year. And also the tip fee, because we, we incinerate the, the majority of our sludge, but we still de-water and transport de-watered sludge to resource recovery, and we've, we've always kept that in our pocket, because if the incinerator goes down for either scheduled or unscheduled maintenance, we have to have somebody to go with the sludge. So we still continue to take about 250 tons a year up to resource recovery. However, their tip fees are going to go from 75 to $110. One thing Kathy and I did last week, we, we use a belt filter press to de-water the sludge, and that technology, although when we put it in, it was top-notch, now they've, the manufacturers have enhanced what, two other types of technology. One is centrifuges, and the other is screw presses. So we went to Connecticut last week, there was a pilot going on at a, we saw a facility in Plainfield, Connecticut. And we're getting about, Kathy, what, about 20 percent solids with the belt press? With the centrifuge, you can get like 28, 29, so you're actually, we're paying, that's eight or nine percent of water if, if we end up going in that direction, that you're not paying the landfill. And then the screw press are saying we can possibly get in the low 30s. So we've got, I believe it's $157,000 in the current year capital budget to overhaul the belt press. Now we're thinking maybe we should rededicate those funds for either a centrifuge or a screw press, but when you do a pro forma on that, it's determined if it makes sense or not. So that's the big challenge we have for the upcoming year, is the cost of sludge disposal.
Also, as far as that type of equipment acquisition, we have to look at it where if the centrifuge would cost of $250,000, $300,000, which I think it is, the cost sharing would be with URI and Narragansett. So it does lessen, lessen that, that cost, but it certainly is a piece of equipment where you have a 8 percent increase in, in the production. The transportation costs are down as well as the disposal costs. So we've got to continue to try to provide for the efficiencies on that system. And if we're going to replace the equipment, we need to make sure that it's going to be something that's going to be there for the, you know, for the long run. When we put that filter press in, was that about 15 years ago, John?
I think it was in 89.
Yeah. I mean, that was the state of the art, because before that, we, we were really getting very little compression as far as the water. I think this is something that we're going to have to take another look at before we get into final approval for next year's capital budget, as to what we're going to transition to there, or whether we're going to stay just with an upgrade on existing equipment. But this budget is also going to require us to have a rate increase. As I mentioned to you last night, the rate increase is going from 100, $230.
240. 240 to 2, it's on page 18 dash 3.
Page is it, John?
18 dash 3. The, the middle chart, the second from the bottom row.
There's two increases that are there. One is the $240 minimum fee, which people would be paying in town going up to 255. So there's a $15 increase there a year. What we're also looking at is for people that use excess, which is over 10,000, 10,000 cubic feet a year, that there would be another $3.25 charge, will be going up to $3.40 for that excess use. And this is really directly related to what we're dealing with with this sludge disposal. That's why I think it's so important for us to look at the equipment efficiencies that we could integrate into future year budgets.
The 255 does afford people up to 10,000 cubic feet, when the conversion's 7.48 gallons per unit. So essentially, can consume up to 74,000 gallons without an excess charge. I'm going to say probably two-thirds to three-fifths of the customers don't get into excess.
That minimum rate will, will churn about $1.45 million in billables. The excess is worth about $275,000. Questions as far as the program's concerned? Again, like each of our budgets, we break it out into each of the different components. This one's more important for us to have identification by different elements, whether it's the general treatment sludge management, whether it's the pumping stations, Silver Lake or Kingston. The reason why is because we bill Narragansett and URI based on the flows through those system elements. So if we're going to spend $300,000 at Silver Lake Pump Station, if 80 percent of that flow is ours, we pay 80 percent of the cost. In Kingston, where 90 percent of the flow comes from the university for the Kingston Pump Station, they would pay 90 percent of that cost. But to do that right, what we've had to do over the years, and I think we've got it refined at this point, is we have to separate all of our labor cost as well. So we had to identify how much time is being spent in each of those elements by each person that works within the program. And then each of those are distributed on a percentage basis of both their personnel costs for, for labor and for benefits. So it gets very, very large in, in terms of the numbers that have to be used to crunch these budgets, but it provides greater accountability for us in terms of the billing statements that we are doing for the university or for Narragansett. The amount of time Trish spends on this one is incredible as far as the personnel benefits. But it's the only way for us to really be able to justify what our costs are. Other questions on wastewater? If not, we move on to tab 19, which is our solid waste program.
So solid waste, people may, people may have read that this is the first time that resource recovery is going to be increasing their municipal tip fee. I believe it's the first time in 25 years. Resource recovery, I think a large portion of that cost is they were required to put in a pretreatment system up at the landfill. They have the debt service for the, which wasn't an expensive treatment facility that they had to construct. They've got the user fees for the F-1 that they, I believe they sent to Narragansett in condition. And they've got the operating cost. So this is the first time, I believe in 25 years, that it's gone. So this is the first time, I believe in 25 years, that it's gone from, it's been at $32 for all those years, and, and the next year they're proposing $35.50 a ton, and then the following year, we go to $46 a ton, which they state is their actual cost for process of waste. So they've been running in a, that's.
This is what's in accord with the governor's budget and with the solid waste management corporation's budget. There's challenge that's been made on it because the governor's budget is actually taking surplus dollars out of resource recovery into the state's general fund. Municipalities through the League of Cities and Towns have challenged, why are you going to be taking money out when you're telling us that you need increased monies from the municipal supports? So initially, they were looking to go to $42 or $45. When the budgets were put out, they came in at 39. There's still a challenge that's going, going at the general assembly level on whether or not that $32 should be increased in the 17, 18 year, if in fact, there's sufficient dollars in terms of the corporation's budget to allow for surplus funds to be led into the, into the state's general fund. So we'll wait and see how that works. But as with all of our budgets, we're budgeting conservatively based on what the probable outcome is going to be, rather than what the best case scenario would be. But again, even if that increase goes through, it's only a very moderate increase as far as the bag tag price going from a dollar 80 to a $2 cost per bag. Because even if we're talking about going up, you know, by $7.50, you have to assume that the number of bags in a ton of waste for that $7.50. That's why we're only looking at that going up by the 15 cents, by 20 cents.
And on the recycling, the other end of it, the recycling, we're still trying to obviously maximize our recyclables. One of the downsides, the worldwide recycling commodities are in the tanks still. So I think one year we got, I think it was 60,000. We do get a, a cost profit sharing with resource recovery every year if they make money. Last year we got zero, when I think it was two or three years ago, as high as $60. So that's what happens, even though our tonnages for recycling has stayed the same or increased slightly, the worldwide recycling commodities are.
You can see that in the, on page 19-7, you can see where the recycling revenue was $13,300 that came in, in the 15, 16 year. We budgeted for it again in 16, 17, but we're not anticipating that we're going to get anything based on the market falling apart after 16.
Yeah, we were high as $60,128 back in 2011, 2012, then it went to $55,024, and then it just, last year it was zero. So unless something changes worldwide, I don't expect to see those numbers. In fact, we call resource recovery, we were preparing the budget and said, you know, do you have a number? And they said, yes, zero. If you get something, you'll be lucky.
The other thing that's in the solid waste budget, if you look on 19-6, is a documentation of what the cost is for closing out the super fund sites. Because you've got two costs there. One is the debt service, that's associated with the monies that we had to borrow to close out both Kingston and, and Rose Hill. You've got the debt service accounts there that are showing you about $180,000 in expense that's going out for that purpose. And then we've still got the cost for professional services consulting, as well as paying DEM back for what their costs are for managing their consultant that is onsite with the, with the flare that is operated, to deal with that thing. So you can see that you've got $290,000 in expenses associated with the landfills, which really have no direct benefit in terms of the communities itself, in terms of services that we're delivering. But we're paying out those costs, and we will continue to. The first bond, I think, was floated back in 2002, so it'll go through 2022. The other one was 2005, so that would go through 2025, that we'll be seeing debt service payments on, on those two landfills. Hopefully, once the money stopped, if it, they do develop through the solar program itself, it'll offset a portion of those costs. Any other questions, comments? If not, that completes John's account for, for this evening. And we will be back in session for next Monday night. Now, on Monday night, the 6th, we're going to be dealing with human service agencies and outside agencies. Today, we've submitted to the council via email copies of each of the introductory letters, as well as a couple of charts associated with both of those programs, so that you'll have an opportunity to review that in advance of meeting with the agencies. We'll also be dealing with the public safety accounts and the debt service fund and debt service payments. Any questions? If not, we'll turn it back to you, Meg.